I've been informed by the town clerk that we have quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order and reconvene. As you know, we left off last night on Article 2. I know we had both some citizens and some members that would like to speak again. I've been informed there's an announcement from the Chair of the Library Committee. So with that, I'd like to recognize Ms. Hodland to come in to the microphone.
Hope everyone had a good sleep. I didn't. Christine Hodland, Precinct, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 2. Go up or down? Christine Hodland, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2, and Library Trustee, Chair of the Kitter Subcommittee. First, I would like it if everyone could all have a moment of silence. I don't know how many of you are aware, but Mary Regan, who was a former Library Trustee for 19 years, passed away on Saturday. She served on the Board for a long time, and her humor and wisdom brought the library forward quite a bit. So I ask you to do that, please. Secondly, related to our article, we have decided that we'd like to refer this article back to the trustees for further discussion, and I'd like to entertain a few moments of your time to explain why, to provide you some of that background. So we've listened to all the different points that we heard yesterday. There was quite a few. I think that we feel like we did a pretty thorough four-year process, and we've been through many and many of these conversations and the points that were raised, but it seems like it was almost the first time that Town Meeting maybe heard many of these. And there was very, quite a few questions that were raised, and we feel it would be in the best interest of the Town for you to get answers or to be confident of the answers that we're hoping to provide to you so that you will be able to move this forward. So we would be looking to do that.
All done?
I would like to speak, but I don't know if you want to.
Just quickly, is there a second?
Ma'am, you're still recognized?
Thank you. So I just, Susan Cockwizer and I, Susan Cockwizer and I, she's the chairperson of the Discovery Board. House and I had many, many conversations today. It's probably the first time that we've had so many conversations, which is a good thing. I guess it's a bad thing that this is the first time, but it's a good thing that we have had that. And we heard many of her points, and I think she heard many of ours, and I think we've exchanged a lot of good information. One of the areas that I feel was unclear was related to the RFP process itself, and I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. I just wanted you to all know, if you don't, that the trustees, you know, we are responsible for drafting and submitting the RFP if it does go out, and we all value the same things that you do. John and I are residents of this town. We've served as trustees, as Town Meeting Members, as PTO Presidents, Vice Presidents. Our children have gone through the Milton Schools, and we all, we all feel the same way you do. We don't want to lose any community services, and we don't want to hurt children. But we are library advocates as well, and we are Town Residents, so we want the same things that you all do. And we're just looking to work through that path together. I think all of you know Will and can speak to his, to the respectedness that he gains in this community as well. So we feel like we are a board that can handle this decision and that we would like to be given that opportunity to do that. So we will be back to you. Related to the values that we are looking for in the RFP, there are specific subject areas that we will be considering, which is the preservation of the building, which is the community and the neighborhood impact, which is the compliance with the zoning, and which is the size of the development. Those things are, we cannot disclose specific criteria to anyone legally, but those are the areas that we will be talking about, among others, when we do finalize the RFP, if we get to that point. I also want to say that we are looking to be committed to at least three open forums regarding the subject areas that I just discussed. So there's many people that have some input. I think the Affordable Housing Group has a lot of expertise in that area. I think Town Meeting Members, I think the Community Residents, the Planning Board, and we would like to engage them in an open conversation to hear more input, so that the final RFP, again, hopefully we get to that point, will incorporate all of those thoughts in that final discussion. So I guess I'm just going to close with a reiteration that we, we hope that we will be coming back to you again with this article with, with more support, and we hope to hear from you. I, I am somewhat disappointed that I haven't heard from any of you. I have reached out, but if you have concerns, the best way to, for us all to resolve those is to reach out and to come to us and to work through those issues with us. And I think we've been very open and willing to do that. And if we haven't, we are telling you right now we want to do that. So I ask your support that way. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion to refer? Checking the Select Board, your opinion, since you expressed them last night in favor, Warrant Committee unanimous? This requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion to refer back to the Library, Building, Library Trustees, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion's unanimous. Article 3, it's fairly lengthy and dense. I'll entertain motion to waive reading.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Unanimous, Ms. Tagheas, I'll recognize you to explain this to us all, please.
Good evening. Cheryl Tagheas, Chair of the Planning Board. We have two clerical corrections. No matter how many times and how many people look at these, we still pick these up at the last minute. So they're in the first sentence, striking the word "will" and changing the word "section" to "chapter." So as many of you may recall, the Town Meeting in May of 2017 approved the greatest state PUD section of the zoning bylaws. One of the things that was driving that was the sale of some property on Canton Avenue. Since that time, the Planning Board has received an application for the redevelopment of that property, which is called the Carberry Property, which is also known as the Walcott Property. So as we've been reviewing that application, some things came to our attention that we wanted to address, and so that's what we're doing with this article. They all fall into the Section 7 setbacks in height. So we're going to review the redline version, and then I'll show you what this is on a plan. So the, the first thing was a little bit of a discrepancy, because while we said that no new roadway could be constructed less than 50 feet from the rear lot line, later we said that there was a 75-foot-wide no disturbance zone. So in one place we said 50 feet, and in another place we said 75 feet. And so what we wanted to do with this is give the Planning Board discretion to waive that requirement at the rear lot line. So that's the first one. The second one has to do with a provision about no new townhouses being constructed less than 550 feet from an existing street. Well, that was written with the idea that that was Canton Avenue, but there's also another street, Carberry Lane, and it wasn't intended to apply to Carberry Lane, so we'll show that on the plan. And then thirdly, somehow, in the last-minute revisions of this article in the May 2017 Town Meeting, this last sentence was removed, and that was not intended to be removed, because right now, this bylaw does not have a height limit in terms of feet. We want to add that back. Okay, so the plan. The plan, please, yes. This time, I brought a pointer. Let's see if it works. So the plan on the left was the plan that was reviewed in May 2017 when the zoning was written and passed. Canton Avenue was at the bottom, so here. Carberry Lane is over here. So it doesn't factor into the thought of the, of the 550 feet, which allowed for these houses to be constructed here, and, and this existing house remained, this existing house remained. Everything else is 550 feet back from here. If that provision were applied over here, it falls into here and affects this plan. The plan on the right is the plan that was submitted to us in the fall of this year. It's basically the same plan with some improvements, but this area here would be impacted by that 550-foot setback requirement. On the roadway and the 50 feet versus 75 feet, that's up here, and that's up here. So you can see there's a pinch in where the property line comes in, so we've got a little bit of a problem of that 50 feet along here. So we didn't want to change the requirement altogether, but we wanted to give ourselves an opportunity to waive the requirement for that section. And then I think the height limit speaks for itself. So we would urge a yes vote.
Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favors, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. I declare a two-thirds vote. We'll go to Article 4 on page 12, also a lengthy article, and you have a green sheet, by the way, that was passed out. If you didn't have it from last night, do we have copies up on the table for tonight? Um, it wasn't, so I'll entertain a waiving of the reading of the motion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. So I'll just point out the changes that were made, since this isn't a green sheet, unless you've got red lines up there on the screen, which I don't think we have, right? You do have red lines? Okay. So there were just a few things. There was a title of a state official that was printed incorrectly in the printed warrant. Those have been corrected. You can see one of them on page 2, paragraph, second paragraph, 1A. There's another one on page 3, in the, in the center of that large paragraph. It now says Registered Professional Engineer. That's a change. Down in the bottom of page 3, third paragraph from the bottom, again, the same phrase, Registered Professional Engineer, has been inserted. And then the other thing that changed is there was a paragraph on page 4, after the long line of bullets, before the phrase mitigation payments, there was a paragraph that's been deleted. So these are textual changes made. These have been approved by the Library Trustees and by the Warrant Committee, and I'll recognize Ms. Tagheas.
I think you met the Planning Board, Mr. Otter.
You know, after 20 hours of Library Trustees, I kind of get a little stuck in there. My mistake.
Cheryl Tagheas, Chair of the Planning Board. So the Planning Board presented this original article to Town Meeting in the fall of last year. There was some discussion then about how maybe it wasn't perfect, and there were some things that we might want to correct, and we still think that's the case. We had one real intention with this at this time, and that was to expand the area or the district to which this could be applied. In the way it was written, it would only apply to planned unit development and mixed-use overlay, and so we wanted to add it so that it would apply to other developments that are not single-family, and also developments in the business districts. So we thought we could do that with a simple change in one sentence, and we sent that to Town Council, and he recognized that we needed to do more than that. So the work on this article since then has been to trace it through, to trace that idea through the language. So part of that is that we wanted this to apply in the business districts where special permit, special permits aren't necessarily required, but site plan approval is required. So we had to trace the language through, because the language had been special permit and planning board. There's also instances in which the Board of Appeal issues special permits, and we wanted this to be available for use in those cases. So that's the language changes. They pretty much have to run through every, every paragraph to pick up the Special Permit Granting Authority and the Site Plan Approval. I'm happy to take questions.
Does anyone wish to speak to this motion?
The Planning Board currently has inherent authority to require submission of traffic studies on applications for special permits and on applications for site plan approval, and to include in special permits or site plan approvals requirements for appropriate traffic mitigation measures if their development is likely to cause adverse traffic impacts. The Board has exercised this authority for many years. Last October, Town Meeting adopted an article adding a section to the zoning bylaw entitled "Traffic Impact Mitigation." This article was applicable to applications for special permits for planned unit development and to applications for special permits in what's called overlay districts, of which there is one. The article has not been approved by the Attorney General, as is required by law if it's to go into effect, and so it hasn't gone into effect. When and if the article is approved and goes into effect, the TIM section will require applicants for PUD developments to prepare a series of very burdensome, expensive, and largely unnecessary traffic studies. These onerous and often duplicative requirements are set out on pages 2 and 3 of the green sheet. They are mandatory, a required part of any application for a project which is subject to TIM. As is now the case, if and when TIM goes into effect, the Planning Board has discretion whether to impose a requirement or requirements for measures to mitigate adverse traffic impacts of a project. However, TIM goes farther and imposes some additional unreasonable requirements. For example, in a situation where there will be an ambiguously defined adverse impact on one of the town's currently overburdened intersections, even if the impact is relatively insignificant compared to the impact of the crush of out-of-town cut-through traffic, the project cannot go forward unless the developer takes effective measures to solve the cut-through traffic problem. This, of course, is impossible. The provision practically invites the developer not to bother with zoning, but to develop under Chapter 40B. The TIM section has a curious provision, which would allow the Planning Board to exact, quote, "contributions," end quote, from developers to pay for mitigation measures which the developer could otherwise be ordered to provide directly. The section specifically states, quote, "Money paid by a specific applicant for a special permit under this section shall only be spent on mitigation measures related to said development and specified as conditions in the special permit," end quote. The section further provides that the permit must specify a timeframe for use of the money and a process to return any money which is not spent. Payment of money for these mitigation measures are to be made to a town fund called the Traffic Safety and Infrastructure Fund, for which obtuse and probably unworkable rules are set out on pages 4 through 7 of the green sheet. The maximum amount of a required payment is small, $450 for each residential unit and/or $300 for each business parking space. Even for a very large project such as Carberry on Canton Avenue, not much would be taken in. The maximum for Carberry, if it were applicable to Carberry, would be a modest $24,300, 54 units times 450. It's not applicable to Carberry, not because it isn't a planned unit development, but because the section is not yet in effect. If, similarly, the maximum for a big business development requiring 80 new parking spaces would be only $24,000, 80 spaces times 300. Smaller developments would pay significantly less. The amounts that this fund could be reasonably expected to take in are so relatively small and the rules so restrictive and complex that it's very unlikely that the fund will ever serve a useful purpose. Although the TIM section has not gone into effect, the Planning Board apparently has decided that it should be expanded to cover all special permits for a qualifying project in a residence district, excluding permits for four or more units, uh, four or less units, and to make it applicable to all applications for site plan approval of a qualifying project in the business district. The Board apparently considers the matter to have some urgency, although it has not made clear what that urgency is. Although the Board has been advised of numerous textual provisions- Although the Board has been advised of numerous textual provisions requiring amendment in the section that was adopted by Town Meeting, it does not consider the need to fix the defects in the current article to have the same urgency as the need to expand its coverage. In pursuit of its desire to quickly secure expansion of the coverage of the TIM section, the Board has adopted an unprecedented and, in my opinion, wholly unsatisfactory procedure. It began when it initially failed to present the text of its proposed amendment, its proposed zoning amendment, to the selectmen or to the warrant committee. Instead, it submitted an outline of what the text supposedly would say once it was written. The outline is set out at the bottom of page 11 and top of page 12 of the warrant. The Board then put a legal ad in the Milton Times saying that there'd be a hearing on January 24, 2019, on amendment to the TIM section, and that interested persons could view the text at the Town Planner's Office.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
You have three minutes left.
Okay. However, the text had not been written, and all that was on file was the outline. Not until the hearing on January 24 was the actual text of the zoning amendment provided to the public. The text is set out on pages 12 through 19 of the warrant and on the green sheet. I was present and advised the Planning Board that I could not comment because inadequate time for review had been given. The Board then voted three to two to deny a continuance of the hearing or to schedule a new hearing. I personally don't believe that the Board's procedure met the requirements of law. In my opinion, the outline was not an adequate substitute for the actual text of the amendment. The procedure was a disservice to the public and to the town. In the comments which I've distributed, I set out my dissatisfaction with the process in some detail. I also set out a number of objections to the proposed amendment. One of my objections is that I believe that expanding the article to include site plan approval will harm small business. I have an example about how a small businessman in an 800-square-foot space who wanted to put on a bathroom would have to go through the application requirements of TIM, which are burdensome and expensive, and it would be totally unnecessary. Shouldn't apply to such a person.
Mr. Whiteside, do you have a minute left?
The provision requiring denial of site plan -- another point. The provision denying, requiring denial of site plan approval on account of out-of-town cut-through traffic over which a developer has no control is beyond the legal authority of the Planning Board in considering a matter on site plan approval. Finally, the proposed final text of the TIM article set out in the green sheet is flawed, and it does not set out the article as adopted in October as amended by the five amendments set out on page one of the green sheet. The green sheet. You start with the 2018 October warrant. The Planning Board recommendation is what was adopted by Town Meeting as the article. In the green sheet, if you look on page one, there are supposed to be five amendments. And these five amendments are the only changes supposed to be made to what's in the 2018 warrant, but there are a lot of problems. And if I could have a few minutes to discuss a few of the problems.
Could you be very specific, please, and brief?
I'll try and be specific and brief. If you look at the first sentence, and if you look at the first sentence in the warrant as well, it has a provision that says to add a final new sentence which reads, this is number one on page 12 of the warrant, it says, "And add a final new sentence which reads 'This bylaw shall not apply to a single residential structure which contains not more than four units.'" Look at your green sheet. That sentence is amended. By amending the sentence, you cannot put the sentence into the text. If you look at point number five, it amends a paragraph that has been removed from the green sheet, so there's nothing there for it to amend. Many -- if you look under Determination of Traffic Impact, second line, the word "applicable" is supposed to be between "other" and "special," and the word "application" between approval and submission, which is on the green sheet, is not supposed to be there. If you look on page three of the green sheet, you'll see that it refers to a Registered Professional Engineer specializing in traffic. This was a change made in one place in October, but not made in other places in October, and this is one of the places it wasn't made. And if there's nothing in the amendment section to say that you should substitute what's in the October warrant, Registered Professional Traffic Engineer, with the words Registered Professional Engineer specializing in traffic. And there's a difference because there's no such thing as a Registered Professional Traffic Engineer. At the bottom of that, on page three at the bottom, if you look and see the words, the last words in the paragraph say "or special permit," "or site plan approval." It says, "shall become conditions of the special permit or site plan approval." The changes that they want to make do not authorize adding these words. The changes only authorize adding the words "or site plan approval." It's number two. Insert the words "or the Site Plan Approval Granting Authority" after SPGA whenever it appears. That's fine. You can insert those words, but that doesn't give you authority to insert the words "or site plan" after "special permit." It's easy enough to put that in there, but it's also legally necessary that you put it in there. The green sheet, as it's set out, is not what was approved in October as amended by these five amendments. And the comments are added, capitalizations are added. There is a lot of stuff in here which is not authorized, and I think the best thing to do would be to send this back to the Planning Board, do it right, come back in October, and, at the same time, do the substantive amendments that are so desperately required in this article.
Is that the motion, Mr. Whiteside? Yes, I've heard a second. Okay, we have a motion to refer back to the Planning Board. Would anyone like to -- I've heard a second. Anyone like to discuss? Yes, Ms. Taguas. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You were recognized first.
Denny Swinson. I'm a Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. I'm a Planning Board member as well, and I know the people who put forth this article, put it forward in good faith. Like them, I could not be more concerned about traffic. But I wanted to once again stand up and speak tonight because the process leading to this article was broken, and the article on substance is also broken. We've not got that language into a good place yet. There are technical but important issues that will impact its application. On process, Town Meeting members come into this meeting with the trust that the Planning Board has vetted the article and the article's language with the public. That did not happen with this article. In fact, a citizen read the brief ad noting that, quote, "The article's complete text of the proposed amendment is available for inspection at the Town Planner's Office." He went to the town hall to get a copy of the complete text so he could comment on the language at the public meeting, but there was no language available to him or to the public. This article before us involves legal language. When the public comes in for public comment, they need to know what they're commenting on. We, as town officials, are obligated to provide the public with the article prior to the public meeting on the article. A fellow board member and I wanted to provide the public with another opportunity for public comment after the public had a chance to see the actual language, but we did not have enough votes on our board to get that done. On the substance of the article as written, this article is a valentine for large-scale developers. For example, the attorney for Carberry-Walcott wants to apply the formula from the base article, which provides 54 units times $450, equaling $24,300 in total traffic mitigation. For a project valued at tens of millions of dollars in an area with immense traffic problems already, a figure that small for development of that size is a windfall for the developer and a loss for the town, and a lost opportunity to make a difference as far as traffic mitigation goes. I'm concerned that people are thinking this traffic fund could be applied anywhere in town. That's not the case as it's written. The funds have to be used within the new development area, and if the funds are not used by the town within a specified amount of time, then the money has to be returned to the developer. I like the concept of the Planning Board having the discretion to require small developers to contribute to a traffic fund when that makes sense, but the way this is written, a small business that wants to expand handicap access ramps or an increase of 10% of floor area would be required to hire a Registered Professional Traffic Engineer. They would have to meet with the town engineer. The town engineer would be required to prepare a written statement on scope of traffic impact. Those outcomes are disproportionate and make no sense, yet that is what the article requires. I could go on here with many more examples, but I want to respond to one thing that has come up before, in that I was told that the discussion of the base article is out of scope because this is just the article as to whether or not to expand the footprint. The article before us is about expanding the footprint and spreading all of these unresolved technical issues from the base article into a wider footprint, making it even more difficult for the Planning Board to apply. So, I would hope that we could send this article back, recognize the deficiencies with the process and the substance, and fix it to actually achieve the outcome it was intended to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Actually, Ms. King. Ms. King will be next.
Did she want to go first? Sorry, did you call her first?
Go ahead. I want you to reply.
Okay. I do want to reply to a few of the comments. As Denny said, we're not reopening the merits of the article that passed. The copy that I received from the town clerk said that this article passed unanimously in the fall of 2018, a short few months ago. I think we recognize that there might be some things that need to be looked at with this article. The article or the closing of the warrant for this town meeting and the annual town meeting in May were very close to one another. We felt as if the Planning Board didn't have adequate time to take up all of the items that people have raised as things that we should look at. I think you all may remember that Brian Furz took the lead on this article in the fall. He's on vacation, and I spent a lot of time in the last week familiarizing myself with all the research that our assistant town planner, Lauren Massier, and he did for this article. I called Carrie Pike, who's the principal in charge of transportation planning at Howardstein-Hudson. This is their expertise, and they've been working with the town for years in East Milton Square. I asked Carrie about the provisions of this article, about what she would expect going into a community like this that might have this type of requirement, the requirements that were described as being onerous and highly detailed requirements or standard. She said, as is required in our article, that the scope of the transportation impact agreement would be guided by a scoping meeting with the town engineer and the town planning department. It would also be guided by the mass DOT-TIA guidelines, which she referred me to and which I read. Lauren provided me the bylaws of the communities that were used as reference, as model bylaws. Those communities include Framingham, Natick, Marshfield, Waltham, Woolburn, Needham, Lexington, Braintree, and the Cape Cod Commission Model bylaws and regulations. Our language is nearly verbatim with at least two of those articles. On the mass DOT traffic impact assessment guidelines, we follow the order in which the requirements are set forth in those guidelines. And the reason the traffic engineers use these guidelines, or the civil engineers who specialize in traffic use these guidelines, is that the state wants to ensure consistency, adequacy, and comprehensiveness of transportation analysis, and they want to make sure that that analysis reflects state goals. They want to make sure that transit enhancement includes bicycle and pedestrian improvements and not just traffic for vehicles. So, they recommend starting with a scoping session, which is our recommendation. Then, they have standard analytical procedures, and those are what we require in our bylaw. And then, they have performance measures and goals, and those are what we have in our bylaw. And then, they do a mitigation analysis and mitigation strategies, and they prioritize those. All of these things are covered in our bylaw. Can there be some improvements? Yes. Does it need a wholesale rewrite? No. The Planning Board voted this way. It was not unanimous, that's for sure. As far as process is concerned, we did the typical process in terms of having a discussion in our meeting and voting to advance this forward for this town meeting. We sent and consulted extensively with town council. We sent it to the select board. We sent it to the warrant committee. I attended at least probably three warrant committee meetings to discuss this article. We secured the support of both the select board and the warrant committee. As far as urgency, I think Brian addressed that in the fall. Projects are pending all the time, and we're always looking at ways to make improvements. This is a fund, we decided that the, it was mentioned that large projects, we have this jurisdiction on these mitigation measures, but on small projects, they don't warrant a large mitigation in and of themselves, so a even small contribution, we've had people say even $2,000 would make some headway towards improvements in certain neighborhoods. And I would like, if I may, John, to address process a little bit because you guided us quite a bit on how to proceed with this article.
Are you referring to town council?
Yes. I'm sorry. Town Council, John Flynn.
Do you recognize Mr. Flynn?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I understand the question right now is related to comments made earlier about the process in general and in particular about the wording in the warrant article versus the wording in the recommendation. Since I drafted them, I guess I should comment on them. But generally, the guiding principle in warrant articles in general, and in particular with zoning bylaw, proposed zoning bylaw amendment, says, "Does the wording of the warrant article give fair notice to the public as to what is proposed in the warrant article?" I believe this article does. It's broadened scope for a reason because of the timing that the Chair just mentioned. They were caught in a real time bind here to try to get their work done between the fall town meeting and fall town meeting and this meeting and specifically the deadline for the warrant article. But if you look at the text of the warrant article, it tells the public, in my opinion, what areas the planning board seeks to amend the bylaw that was adopted last October. And with the warrant committee process, those concepts became the text that you see in the recommendation as amended by the green sheet. So to answer the question, if it was a question, in my opinion, the process followed here complies with the law that applies to zoning bylaw amendments that are proposed to a town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Ms. King, you recognized?
Virginia King, precinct three. I would like to support sending this back for further analysis and study. It seems that we have some real conflict even amongst the planning board. I think I read that there was also a lot of discussion about this in the warrant committee. It is confusing when we read something. We don't have, you know, the text in front of us, but we have to insert it ourselves, and it would be nice to be able to see what we approved last year redlined with what has changed. I think there'd be a greater understanding if we go back and look at it, do something about it, and then we have the time to look at that, analyze it, figure out where we stand on it, and really give it a good, so that we can respond to it in a way that's helpful in that. Like right now, I don't know what traffic mitigation is going to do, really. As a citizen of the town, okay, it's great to get some money in, but realistically, what can that money do? How much, you know, how much is needed for this project to be done or that project to be done? And does it really impact traffic or not? I mean, basically, there's more of us with more cars, more people living around us and driving through us to get to Boston and other places. Can we even impact traffic? So I think that we need to look at this a little bit more, and I don't, with all due respect to the work that the planning board has done, I don't think that's been done enough. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen, you recognized?
Mr. Moderator, Peter Mullen, precinct two. I have a couple of questions for town council, and then I'd like to address the pending motion. One, I'd like to know whether or not town council agrees that the planning board has some inherent authority to impose conditions on special permits to mitigate traffic and to make payments or to do other things to mitigate traffic and whether, in fact, we've done that in the past. Secondly, I'd like to know whether or not if we go to a vote on the merits of this article and it were not to pass, and my understanding is that it would require a two-thirds vote, that there's then a waiting period before this matter can be addressed again by the body. And I'd like to get the answers to those before I address the pending motion.
Certainly. Mr. Flynn?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. It is true that the planning board has inherent authority to do, to require some of the measures that have been mentioned, but it's not clearly codified in the law. And by the same token, it is not unusual for towns to adopt zoning bylaws that require specific mitigation measures, probably mostly to give fair notice to applicants what's going to be expected of them, to avoid a complaint that the, it's arbitrary and capricious or vague or whatever. If the, if this amendment does not receive a positive vote from town meeting, there is a two-year period within which the same proposal cannot be considered by town meeting with two caveats. One is if there are material changes to the proposal and then the two-year limit does not apply. And the second caveat is if the planning board by a four-fifths vote, votes to support it, then it can go forward. I'm sorry. In the second concept I just mentioned, if it is the same or substantially the same amendment does propose tonight, and if the planning board by a four-fifths vote supports that amendment, then the two-year bar does not apply.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
Peter Mullen, precinct two. I'd urge the body to support the motion to refer this back to the planning board. I think basically on the discussion we've heard tonight that there's a recognition that there's a lot of problems with this. If the board has the inherent authority to deal with pending situations and impose conditions that required addressing traffic, then we don't have the sense of urgency that we need to do this. In fact, this may be counterproductive. The payments required by this may be less than the board would otherwise impose on some projects. I don't think we want to get into the whole question of whether we're within or not within a waiting period. I think that there's a lot of problems with the language, particularly with regard to the concept of being able to tie particular traffic problems to specific developments, and then any money that's paid has to be used only to mitigate that, the traffic problems caused by that particular development. So I'd urge the body to vote yes on referral back.
Anyone else wish to speak to this motion to refer? If I see none, then I'll ask you would like to speak, Mr. Gias? You recognized?
Thank you. I just want to be clear on that last point. We understand by the law, by the model bylaws and from town council's opinion, that the funds have to be spent in the area or in response to impact caused by the new development. In other words, you can't set up a fund that's going for, and then have monies from a project in East Milton go to fund a transportation improvement out on Canton Ave near 138. The law is clear about that. The idea behind it is that, let's just say, East Milton Square, I think Brian explained this last fall, you might have four small projects that in and of themselves wouldn't justify putting a requirement for a developer to put a new traffic signal in in East Milton Square. However, four projects combined might actually trigger the requirement, and then the four projects would help pay for that project. There's a lot of things that are complicated about this that are difficult to analyze on the floor. So the planning board will support taking this back to us. Whoever has interest in this article, I have committed that we will work on this article and bring it back for the fall town meeting. So if you have an interest, follow our agendas and attend our meetings, please. Thank you.
Warrant committee?
George Asher, town meeting member precinct six, chair warrant committee. We unanimously support the recommendation to remand it to the planning board.
Mr. Wells?
Good evening. Thank you, Richard Wells, chair of the select board. Just two points. First point, we had not voted on this article yet. We had decided originally before we came on each of the articles to listen to the discussion, take positions at the time, this being the time now. Out of due respect to all of your hard work and everything you've done, we unanimously do support sending it back for, it's traffic, it's just too important for the town, so thank you.
We'll proceed to the vote. It's a majority vote for motion to refer. All in favor of the motion to refer back to the planning board, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Just a request from town meeting member Brian Walsh. If anyone happened to take a photo last night of the old hand, pull-hand drawn fire truck, he would love to get a copy of it. So if you could, I've got his email. You can see me, you can see Brian Walsh. We are now on to Article Five on page nineteen. If the town vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects, to provide that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied. I recognize Treasurer Jim McCollum. Is he here? There he is.
Jim McCollum, town treasurer, precinct seven. This is in addition to the new mass municipal law. It allows you to take the bond premium you receive at term of bonding. You take out, you take out the issuance costs, and then you can roll the rest of the bond premium back into the bond knowing the cost of the bond. I highly recommend a yes vote on this. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Mullen?
Peter Mullen, precinct two. I think this is just a technical question, but if you look at the recommendation, it says the town is voting to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorized the borrowing of money to make these provisions applicable. I assume that there's been votes of the town to borrow money that are now closed, done, long over. Are we amending those as well?
Mr. McCollum has that answer.
No, actually, this is for authorized but unissued going forward. I didn't write this language.
Mr. Mullen, do you have, Mr. Flynn, do you have a comment?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This language was provided by bond council. That specific question was asked and answered by bond council, and we again had that conversation on Monday just to verify that that's true. So this article and the recommendation as worded in the opinion of bond council apply as the treasurer told you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? This, per bond council, this requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. It's unanimous. We'll go to Article Six, page twenty. Recommended that the town vote to establish a school building committee for the purpose of planning the construction, alteration, renovation, remodeling, and furnishing of school buildings, and to authorize the moderator to appoint nine members to serve on the committee, two of whom shall be members of the school committee and two of whom shall be members of the select board or its designees. I will recognize Dr. Donahue to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Donahue, town meeting member precinct three, chair of the school committee. Thank you. We can go to the next slide, please. So briefly, I'm going to touch on our enrollment growths from 2008, our current elementary space needs, and the study that we commissioned, the school committee commissioned by Drummy Rosane Anderson, the architectural firm that is responsible for the construction and reconstruction of our six current schools, and a brief discussion of some of the options to address these needs. Again, the conversation this evening is tailored to whether or not a building committee is necessary. A lot of this information is provided for the edification of town meeting members. I would deeply love their feedback on some of the issues presented, but some of it may or may not be germane to the issue at hand. Thank you. So these are the historical enrollments for the Milton Public Schools and the projected future enrollments. In 2007, 2008, which is the effective completion date of the school building project or thereabouts, we had a total enrollment in the Milton Public Schools of just under 3,800 students. We now have just under 4,300 students. That's an approximately 400 student increase in that time. 500, thank you, Dr. Pavelcheck. We are projected to acquire another 500 students in the coming 10 years. Where are these students concentrated? These students are concentrated largely, heavily largely, at the elementary level. So you can see here in the other column, these, this is the elementary enrollment, pre-K through five, again, just under 1,900 10 years ago, just over 2,300 currently. Next slide, please. Graphically, this is the elementary school enrollment from 2008 to now. This is our projected enrollment within the next three years and our projected enrollment within the next 10 years. We are projecting an approximately 34% increase in the elementary school enrollment relative to the completion of the school building project. That is astounding. Next slide, please. Why are we in this position? This is a very complicated slide, but there is a lot of information here. There are two lines. The first is births, and the second is enrollment in kindergarten. Down at the bottom, you have birth year and kindergarten enrollment year. You will see that until approximately 2011, the number of children born in Milton roughly paralleled those students who enrolled in kindergarten five years later. In 2012, that number began to diverge. That number continues to diverge dramatically. This delta between the number of students enrolled and the number of children born in Milton is one of the major driving factors for why we are projecting a one-third increase in our elementary population. This is astounding. This is largely a factor of people moving into town with children and enrolling them in the public schools, in kindergarten. There are other factors at play for why the enrollment is increasing, including retaining more of our students that traditionally went to non-public schools, whether it was private or parochial schools. But this is one of the major factors. Next slide, please. So for the past six years, we have been taking spaces within the public schools and turning them into classrooms. And within the last two years, we realized that this trend was continuing, and we needed a solution. We needed to know if this trend was going to continue, and if so, how far into the future, and what the problems we were going to encounter would be, because we are running out of space to put students and to create classrooms. So as I said, we hired Drummy Rosane Anderson, the architectural firm that designed our current schools. They are intimately aware of our current usage. They are responsible for our 20-year capital facilities plan. They came back. They walked through all six of our schools. They looked at our enrollment, current enrollment, projected enrollment, and this is what they came to. They came to the conclusion that we will need in the next 10 years 26 classrooms to accommodate our pupils. For perspective, that's an elementary school. That is a four-strand K to five elementary school. Next slide, please. So what are some of the options? Well, as I said, this is in part for the edification of town meeting and a little bit of field from the article under review, but we can do nothing, which is not what we're currently doing. We are currently converting art and music rooms, et cetera, into classrooms. We can do nothing and allow our class size to increase. As I said, we can continue doing what we're doing, convert art, music, and computer rooms and other spaces into classrooms. That is spaces that are conducive to simply moving in furniture for a classroom. We can take space that is not currently designed to be a classroom and convert it into a classroom. Specific examples include carving out spaces in the library to create classrooms. We can utilize the underutilized space on the top of the Cunningham Building, which at one point was a cafeteria, classrooms, museums. We can rent modular classrooms. We can rent and renovate space in town or do a combination of the above for short-term solutions. Next slide, please. Long-term solutions. Again, we can do nothing from a capital perspective and simply tolerate larger class sizes. We can continue to convert the art, music, and computer rooms and libraries and call it done there. Or we can construct new space, given the magnitude of the Given the magnitude of the number of classrooms that we are projected to need, we feel very strongly that we will need to construct new space. So how does that new space manifest itself? Well, it could manifest itself as an addition to an existing elementary school, an addition to the Pierce Middle School, where you move the fifth grade to the middle school, a freestanding early education center, an addition at the Milton High School, that's an early education building, or a new freestanding K to 5 school. Next slide, please. Can you advance the slide? No, I'm sorry. So if you can go back to the previous slide, this was intended, this is a PDF and was intended to be a PowerPoint, but it was intended to graphically display some of the options of space that we have here. You'll have to imagine with me that... Best laid plans. So in a moment, you'll see a slide that shows our existing four elementary schools, the Pierce Middle School and the High School, graphically, and the available spaces. In the middle of the slide, you'll see graphic representations for... And Dr. Pavlichak, do you want to just stand there and advance for me, please? Many thanks. Group effort. So these are current spaces that we have available to us. Art and music classrooms at the individual elementary buildings. These are potential spaces, rooms carved out of libraries at the three buildings, and potential three classrooms on the top floor of the Cunningham Building. Possible modular classrooms down here. Can you advance? Thank you. This combination of classrooms does not get us to 26, and I would argue, and I would be happy to have this discussion, that it would lead to a degree of crowding at these sites that is borderline intolerable. Long-term construction would net us a number of different classrooms depending on which option we chose. So if you look here, an early education center would net us 26 classrooms. A new K to 5 school would net us 26 classrooms. An early education center addition at the High School would net us 26 classrooms. Other combinations, such as additional wings at elementary schools would net us between 11 and 18 classrooms, or an addition at the Pierce Middle School, moving the fifth grade there, would net us 18 classrooms. Next slide, please. Thank you. So long-term options. So these are some of the options for adding on at the additional schools. At Glover, so the architects, when they came in and they evaluated our elementary schools, they were of the opinion that Glover was the only site where it was feasible to add an addition. They proposed two different configurations, a one-floor configuration and a two-floor configuration. You'll see here, they're proposed one-floor configuration behind the Glover Building, which would be 11 classrooms and would necessitate moving the paved play surface back into the green play surface and moving this road behind, this fire access road behind the building slightly. Likely also necessitate enlarging the parking lot out front. Their suggestion was for a two-story possible addition at the front of the Glover Building that would net us 18 classrooms. Fundamentally, there's no reason you couldn't build this two-story addition at the back of the building beyond building flow and related dynamics. But those were the options for additions at the elementary school. Next slide, please. At the Pierce Middle School, they identified an area in the back of the building where we could potentially put a fifth-grade wing. For those of you familiar with the building, this is the wing that was built in the 60s. This is the wing that was built in the 90s. This is the newer part of the building that was constructed as part of the school building project. You could put a fifth-grade wing off the back here and maintain enough green space behind to accommodate a soccer, football, or rugby field. This is a conceptual 3D rendering of what that addition would look like off the back of the building. Again, here's Brook Road. Here's the front of the building. This is the current seventh and eighth-grade wing. This is the current sixth-grade wing. Next slide, please. A possible rendering of addition at the High School site. So this would be a potential early education center added to the back of the Milton High School. An addition such as this would net us 26 classrooms. Next slide, please. And the architect was, this is three-dimensional rendering here. If you can go back, one Dr. Pavlichak, thank you. The architect was mindful of the fact that this space is utilized by athletic teams and endeavored to preserve an area here that would be predominantly high school-centric and create an area at this side of the building that would be predominantly early education-centric. So there'd be separate entrances to these common areas. Next slide, please. This is a three-dimensional rendering of what such a building would look like. Again, this would be the entrance area to the back. This is the back blank wall of the fieldhouse. And this is the current parking lot at the back of the fieldhouse. A potential new elementary school. These are some of the, these are the spaces that you would build in a new elementary school. You'd obviously need classrooms for the children. You'd need some special education space, a media center, library, a gym, a cafeteria, administration building or administration area, and then outside areas as well. So the estimated size of a theoretical fifth elementary school would be 77,000 square feet approximately. Next slide, please. Again, relative costs for the short-term options. You will likely see funding requested for some of these at future town meetings. Again, the least expensive option is to continue to convert art and music rooms that are essentially elementary classroom-sized into elementary classrooms. And that would make art and music electives portable. There'd be art and music on a cart. They would have to visit the elementary classrooms instead of the elementary students visiting the dedicated art and music spaces. Construction of new space in the libraries was relatively speaking to this process surprisingly affordable, in our opinion. Construction of new classroom space on the top floor of Cunningham was surprisingly more expensive. Next slide, please. These are estimated costs from the architect on what these various building solutions would be. They are arranged from least expensive to most expensive. Next slide, please. And next slide. And next slide. Next slide. In the interest of time, we'll skip ahead to here. I will point out that the early education center, whether it's at the High School, whether it's freestanding, and a new elementary school are the only options that net us in their entirety, the 26 classrooms that we are expected to need in the next 10 years. Obviously, all of these options come with their own lists of pros and cons. Next slide, please. Thank you. So that's the entirety of the presentation. What I would like to impress on you tonight is that the Milton Public Schools has a very significant problem. It's a wonderful problem to have. We are very, very popular, extremely popular. We anticipate that in the next 10 years, the buildings that were built and developed to accommodate 14 strands of elementary classrooms, that's 14 first grades, 14 second grades, et cetera, will be running 18 of those. That's a tremendous growth. And I am not sure, we think it very unlikely that we will be able to accommodate that number of students with our current educational standards in our current building footprint. We are seeking the formation of a school building committee because we believe that over the next weeks to months as a town, we will have a discussion about the direction that we are going to go in. Which of these options seem the most realistic, which seem the most feasible, and we will need help implementing that town-wide solution. We very much feel like this impending wave of students is staring us in the face, and there is not a moment to lose. That to delay the creation of this committee, whether it's to the spring town meeting in several weeks, months, or to the fall, or to the subsequent year, would be a dereliction on our part. That there are significant steps that we can take between now and then, and to entertain such a delay would put us in a very uncomfortable position several years down the road after we have consumed all of the art rooms and all of the music rooms, and after we have come to you and we've asked for $80,000 to build classrooms out of libraries, because those things will happen, and then we're looking at you and we're saying, now what? It's another year or two before a building comes online, and if we only had that time back in 2019, we would have a solution ready. So with that, I'm sure there'll be questions. I'm happy to answer them all. But again, I'd like to impress on you that I would dearly love your feedback on the options discussed, but the article tonight is whether or not we need a building committee to help us move the process forward of building a solution. So we have a meeting tomorrow at Tucker that you're all welcome to come to, and I'd love to have your feedback on the various options at that point. But I think it would be the best use of our time this evening if we could confine our discussion to whether or not we think a building committee is appropriate at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, were you, Mr. Clark, were you waiting to speak? Okay, Mr. Collins, you're recognized.
I have given to the, first, Webster Collins, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. I've given to the moderator a suggested amendment to this article. I'm not opposed to it at all, but I think there's additional wording that should be added, and I believe that has been put on the screen. I don't see, I don't see it, but I'll read it. I'll read it then.
Thank you.
What I'd like to recommend is as follows. To add the words after purpose, put a comma in, and then add "in the most cost-effective manner," so that the article would read, "recommended that the town vote to establish a school building committee for the purpose, in the most cost-effective manner, of planning, the construction, alteration, renovation, remodeling, and furnishing of school buildings, and to authorize the moderator to appoint nine members to serve on the committee, two of whom shall be members of the school committee, and two of whom shall be members of the select board or its designee." The reason for adding these key additional words is as follows. The basic economics of the town of Milton, I think, need to be addressed at this particular point, and to address the whole issue of afford to pay and the issue of cost. The town of Milton's median household income for about, just under 50% of our people living in the town, the households, is, the exact number is $75,619, and projected to increase in five years to $82,670. 30% of our people living in the town are elderly, and the average annual increase over the next five years, projected, again, these are economic projections that I have available to me and my company, is an average of 1.6% per year, and under the basis of Proposition 2.5, that's less than the 2.5% override issues that we often face in this town. And so basically, what I am saying is, you have heard tonight, we could spend up to $50 million in bonded debt. If you add our Fire Station Building Committee, maybe $20 million, that's 70 million, add the $11 million we just already funded for miscellaneous items that were so important, that gets you up to 80. We add on top of that our existing debt, and where are we? We're pushing $100 million in debt with a town budget of $106 million. The bottom line in simple terms is those numbers just don't work for our people living within our town. It's not like the people that disagree with EU and England's Brexit, our employees, excuse me, our population just can't exit the town. They have to stay here, and they have to pay. And so with a basic fundamental problem is an issue of being able to operate in the most cost-effective manner. And by that, I mean this. There's nothing wrong with the modular approach to take a look at it from the top-down as what is best for the town, the most cost-effective manner. That is the reason that I have recommended adding up just a few simple words so that when we move forward, we aren't going to be caught in a trap. We're just working our way out of one trap that we got caught in 20 years ago with a $44 million cost override that fortunately, due to the Copeland Foundation, got knocked down to 33 million, and then we funded that by bonded debt. The huge amount of bonded debt that could come out of this in the future is just something that I don't think that we should let slip under the rug and not take into full consideration.
Is there a second? Okay, I'll read the language. Are you getting it up there, Ms. Hoy? So if you go to Page 6, text in bold, second line, it currently reads "committee for the purpose." Mr. Collins is proposing putting in a comma and inserting the words "in the most cost-effective manner," comma, "of planning, the construction, alteration, et cetera." Mr. Collins, do I have that right?
Okay. I'll read it again. I'm sorry. I didn't look up and look at the screen. After the word "purpose," comma, "in the most cost-effective manner," comma.
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Is it up on the screen so we can see it now? Yes. Okay. Would anyone like to speak to the motion to amend? Is that Mr. Walker? Yes.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I'm happy that it seems that we've gotten religion on night two, but if it is, I think it stands to reason that this will be carried out in the most cost-effective manner possible. I think we should trust the as-yet-unformed school committee, School Building Committee. If the Fire Station Building Committee was willing to insert some language, similar language, I might be in favor simply because of the symmetry, but I don't think we need this. I think that we should choose the right people for the building committee. As we heard last night, there is quite a bit of experience and qualification on the Fire Station Building Committee.
Ms. Gankarski, you're recognized.
Good evening. Joan Gankarski, precinct one. A little bit of history and then a suggestion. Thirty-five years ago, I worked for an organization called the Massachusetts Demographic Research Institute. Back then, data were not as easy to get as it is today, and I received a call from the town of Milton. I knew of Milton because it was at the end of Route 24, and during that time and after the call, I helped with numbers, population estimates, and projections to be used to design and look at what would be needed in this town for the future in the schools. A couple of years later, when I received a job in the Boston area, I knew of Milton and the people I worked with then, and this is why I chose to move to this town. It was very progressive and looked forward to its education, and I thought, "That's the type of town I would like to live in." Now, that's the history. Number two, I would like to address the members who will be on the committee. It indicates two of whom shall be on the school committee, and two of whom shall be members of the select board or its designees. Moderator Hiss, I trust that you would choose the other five members. That would be very effective on this committee, but I would like to suggest adding, it could be among the five, that one be the-
Ms. Gankarski, if I could, we're, right now, we're discussing the motion to amend.
Oh, I thought you were-
Nope.
Oh, to add an amendment, oh, I'm sorry.
If we could just do one at a time and we can come back to yours, if that's okay?
Or can I just end it and then they'll have heard it? Would you want to go?
Let's, why don't we not confuse the audience? I'll recognize you once we're done with this.
Okay, and I'll end it then. I've got two more sentences.
Okay.
Sorry, folks.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion to amend? I see Ms. Friedman-Hanna, you were here, Mr. Fundling was there, Mr. Carr's here, okay.
Karen Friedman-Hanna, precinct two. I'm standing to, regarding the amendment first, but I am going to come back for the article. I would offer to you that cost needs to be defined here in more than one way. Cost cannot be looked at only as financial cost. If we don't do this, the cost to our kids' education is dramatic, and so the idea of having it just be put in as financial consideration here, I absolutely am against. So please consider not having that. I agree with the last speakers, two speakers ago, idea that if this was across the board for any proposed budget item that we already voted on, if this same stipulation were to exist across the board, so that it heightens the awareness that of course we're going to be cost-effective in our decision-making, but cost for the firemen, for their lives, is taken into consideration for what they need, cost for what the need for the ambulance bays are of the elders in our town is part of this, not in what the financial cost is, but what the burden is if they were to have problems and the ambulances can't get to them, that's in the life cost, and cost to our students in that if they do not get these changes, and cost to our teachers, and cost to our administrators as well, in what this means for not doing this, in what actually will occur to our education process in this town, it needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
I think Mr. Fundling, do you want, maybe next? By the way, Mr. Clark, you've been waiting. Did you want to speak to the motion to amend? No, so Mr. Fundling, I think you're next.
Jay Fundling, town meeting member, precinct three. I rise to oppose the amendment. I do, first of all, want to remind this body that any cost that's going to come through this project will come to this body for approval or rejection, so we'll get to say then if we think it's a good use of the money, and if it's a significant amount of money, which I think it will be, it'll also go to the voters to approve or reject. Now, cost is always important. I'm not going to say it's not, but it can't be the only factor. What would be the most cost-effective solution? The most cost-effective solution would probably be remove all art rooms, remove all music rooms, remove every gym, remove the libraries, remove the computer lab, if you can get away with it, remove the cafeteria, stuff the kids in there, that'd be very cost-effective. And then, people would stop sending their kids to public schools, that would be even more cost-effective. That would be very cost-effective. I don't think it's what the town wants. So we need to consider the quality of life, the quality of the schools, and we need to turn to our professional educators and say, not only what's the cheapest solution, but what's the best solution for the education for our children? I trust them to give us a good answer while balancing cost at the same time, so I oppose this amendment.
Mr. Clark, no. Ma'am, will you, on to speak to the motion to amend? Yes, please, you're recognized.
Lisa Murphy, precinct one. I'm here to speak in support of this amendment because I was recently retired, well, a couple of years ago now, it seems recent to me, but I retired. Spent, I spend a lot of time now looking at my budget, looking at how much I'm paying in taxes, as opposed to other towns, other places to go, other states even, and I have come to the conclusion that I'm going to have to leave Milton. I didn't think so. When I moved here, I thought I'd stay here forever. We need to, because it's a small town, a small town, we do need to, you know, keep the taxes high, but we also have to be careful about how we spend this tax money, because people like me are going to leave, and the people who are going to move into my home are probably going to have children adding to the problem. So in that way, it's not cost-effective to, to push me and to push the older people out of the town before they were planning on going. And to me also, cost-effective, coming from a world of business, doesn't mean you're going to take the worst, the cheapest choice. You're just going to make a choice in such a way that it will be the least expensive for that choice. So you choose what you want, but then you say, "How do we do this in the most effective manner?", not that we have to take the most, the cheapest. Cost-effective and cheapest are not the same thing, and I think the people who have been saying they didn't want this amendment are thinking they are the same thing. Cost-effective doesn't mean you take the one where you take away the high, you know, the different classrooms. You just say you looked at, you decided to add classrooms, which is the best way to do it. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, I think you were next.
Brendan McLaughlin, precinct three, town meeting member. I'm asking people to reject this amendment, to vote against it. I think we worked very, very hard to build the schools that we have, and I think one of the concepts behind the schools was that they'd be comparable, and that kids in one school would have access to the same kind of resources as kids in another school, and to think of kids in Milton in a trailer, I think it's terrible. It's terrible. You know, we should be proud that we're attracting the families we are. That's a testament to the strength of this town, that people want to live here, and I think, and I sympathize with the previous speaker and the points that she made, but we can't sacrifice our children. And I, if this said "in the most effective manner," I'd have no issue, but why are we emphasizing cost above everything else? Cost is important, and I'm sure, and I trust, moderator Hiss, will appoint people who are very conscious of cost and who will do a very good job, and I think we need to trust that committee to come back with recommendations that we can evaluate, but to put cost above all else, I think is really putting too much priority on it. Let's hear what this committee has to say. Let's hear their proposals and evaluate them and make up our minds then. Thank you.
Ma'am in the white coat, did you want to speak, next to Mrs. Collins?
Janaviv Martland, precinct four, town meeting member. I'm also a Milton public school teacher, and I just rise in opposition to the language here. I think it would constrain a lot of what this committee could do, and the next step is I support this tremendously, as we see our classrooms getting a lot more full these days. Thank you.
Apologies, Ms. Martland, she taught my son in, what, sixth grade English, but it's the spotlight, and I can't wait to see everybody. Yes, Mr. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahy, precinct nine. I am opposed to amending this article also. I have two points. First, I think that language is a little preliminary, because this article is basically assembling a committee. My second point is, and it's a little bit broader, and it's probably consistent with Mr. Walker's point of view, I feel as a town meeting member, each one of us, and any other board that exists within the town, when you take the position that you have here tonight, you have an obligation to the residents and the taxpayers to make every decision in a cost-effective manner, whether it be a solution to a future need for classroom space, or the need for fire stations, or any other need that we have. We should be searching for the most cost-effective, in balance, decisions for any of the challenges that we face. I think I'm in my fifth year as a town meeting member, and honestly, I don't think we've consistently done so, but I hope with the two largest expenditures that the town faces now, a solution to the school challenge and a solution to our fire department challenge, that we will do for the town and for the residents what we should do, find cost-effective solutions. Thank you.
I don't, yes, Mr. Don, Dr. Donahue, pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Donahue, town meeting member, precinct three, chair of the school committee. I'd like to thank Mr. Collins for making us aware of this proposed amendment ahead of time. School committee unanimously requests that you reject this amendment. Would also like to thank Mr. Collins for his service and for his dogged attention to the debt burden that the town has and its effects on the fiscal realities that we face. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, you sometimes comment. Figured I'd get it now. Okay, warrant committee? No, you do want to comment? Okay.
I just wanted to get our ducks in a row here. It's getting late. We are also opposed, and just to echo Dr. Donahue's comments, because he and I both sit on Capitol together, and Mr. Collins is exactly correct. When you look at the mounting debt here, from an elected official, a committee point of view, any of it, it's something you definitely have to take heed of, but we appreciate it, and I appreciate his comments and his insight very much, but we would be opposed to this motion. Thank you.
Warrant committees?
George Asher, chair warrant committee, town meeting member, precinct six. The warrant committee does not support this, though while intentioned, we feel that it's superfluous. We understand that committees have jobs to do, and we expect that that will be done in a cost-effective manner, and certainly if it comes before us, we'll make sure it's cost-effective.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The motion fails. We're back to, I think, Ms. Gankarski. I promised you a step. Would you like to speak to your motion now? Mr. Clark, okay.
Dan Clark, town meeting member, precinct ten. I just had a couple of questions, one for the, somebody from the school committee, I think. I'm just curious, as a more recent Milton resident, the schools were completed, and you mentioned what the current enrollment was at that level, but I assume the schools were built with some projected growth at that time, I hope. So I have a couple of questions. I could be wrong in that, I was just curious to know what that threshold is. If it wasn't, that's fine, I'm just curious for-
Do you want to ask all your questions, if you have them already?
Yep, and then another question for the select board. I'm just curious if you find it necessary to have two members or your designees on this committee, and what you see as designees? Just looking for some clarification on that.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Donahue.
Thank you, Kevin Donahue, town meeting member, precinct three, chair of the school committee. So the answer to your question is no, the schools were not built with growth capacity in mind. We were precluded from doing so as part of the conditions for receiving our significant reimbursement from the state at the time, which was ninety percent at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Richard Wells, chair of the select board. In answer to your question, first, this was not proposed by us, this came, we were added to it, it was, it's not our article, but if it is so, we will, we haven't even discussed it yet, but we'll make sure that we meet the mandate that is associated with the appointment.
I think he was interested in the what a designate, example of designate, was that it, Mr. Clark?
Who we would pick for designees?
It was two-part. It was one, do you feel it necessary that the select board needs two members or their designees, and then what you saw as a classification of who you would designate?
Thank you. I think we're comfortable with the two members. We have not even had a discussion yet whether it would be members themselves or whether or not they would pick designees, and I remember from the conversation when this was created that that was the thought, to give the board the ability to pick designees if the members themselves did not want to sit. So it gives the board input either way, either two members sitting or two designees designated by the board itself. Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Carr, I think you were next. I'm sorry, do you, are you done with your consult?
question, and I understand that two of whom shall be members of the school committee, and then two of whom shall be members of the school, select board or its designees, and I wanted to understand why it was two. And in lieu of two select board members or designees, I was going to suggest the following: that that be lowered to one, and then we have the superintendent of schools or a designate, and the teachers' union president or a designate. And why I wanted to add those last two is that the superintendent and the teachers have direct daily contact with the students, and then the rest would be, the other four would be selected by you. And I just wanted to offer that for consideration.
So let's see if I, we get the language right?
Okay.
So you'll change in the second to last line on the right-hand side, where it says, "Two of whom shall be members of the select board," you'd reduce that to one?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of whom will be the superintendent of Milton schools or a designate, and the president of the teachers' union or a designate.
Are you trying to increase the board to ten?
No, and then you will have the other four. I decreased it by-
Okay.
-one in select, and then that would have left five, and then added these two, leaving you, so it's still nine in total.
Okay, so if I try this language out-
Okay.
And Ms. Hoy, do you want to try to type it as I go, unless you have it written out? Unless you have it written out. No, do you have it written out, Ms. Gankarski?
Oh, no. I just had notes.
Okay.
And I have...
I'll see if I can try reading it roughly and see if there's a second based on the wording that I've captured. So if I start with the second to last line, "Whom shall be members of the School Committee, and one of whom shall be a member of the Select Board or its designee," comma, "one of whom shall be the Superintendent of the Milton Public Schools or their designee, and one of whom shall be the President of," we'll get the language right, "the Milton Teachers Education Union," period. I think that's the essence of what Ms. Gankarski is getting at.
And it is about...
In order to, I'll pause. Why don't we just wait to see the language before I ask for a second to see if you really, everyone understands? Ms. Gankarski, is that correct?
I, after, let me see. One of whom shall be a member, singular, of School Board or its designee, then it should be one of whom shall be Superintendent of Milton...
Could you go to the mic, Ms. Gankarski, just so Ms. Hoy can hear you?
Okay. Nine members to serve on the committee, two of whom shall be members of the School Committee, and one of whom shall be a member of the Select Board or its designee, one of whom will be the Superintendent of Milton Public Schools or its designee. Shall, okay, one of whom shall be Superintendent, and that needs to be spelled, it's not spelled correctly, is it? Superintendent? Super... Schools or the designee, and one of whom shall be the President, small P, of the Milton Teachers Union or its designee, and its Superintendent of Schools, plural. And is that correct way to spell Superintendent? It is? It is? I'm sorry.
Do we have this right now?
After Milton Public Schools, you do not need a comma after the word schools, Milton Public Schools. Take away that comma. And after then, or designee, comma, and one of whom shall be the President of the Milton Teachers Union or designee. And I would need the appropriate name for the Milton Teachers Union. I don't know its official name.
Do you know the name of the Milton Teachers Union to get this language right?
Kevin Donahue, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, Chair of the School Committee. For that point of information, I believe it's the Milton Education Association.
Milton, okay, Education Association.
Educators, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hoy, do we have that? Milton Educators, President of the Milton Educators Association instead of Teachers' You are? Okay. Does the audience understand, I think, the sense of the language? Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. While we're getting this perfectly cleaned up, we'll present it to you. Would anyone wish to speak to the motion to amend? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kristen Bagley Jones, Precinct Ten, and I just want to say that I don't know if anybody asked the School Committee about this motion, that Mary Gormly will obviously always be an ad hoc member of the committee, but it's really up to her if she wants to be a voting member. And as much as I support the teachers, I don't believe that the Teachers' Union belongs on a project where things like class size and classrooms and where art rooms are going to be would be appropriate in their role of supporting the union. So I oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Cuccello?
Excuse me, Anthony Cuccello, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member. I oppose this article.
We're on the motion to amend.
I'm sorry, I support the article, I oppose the motion to amend. I apologize. I think one of the things that, in my experience, that has made committees work, building committees that we've had over the years, is that you have a series of people with a lot of different types of skills and a lot of different perspectives. And we have a lot of very talented people in the town. We saw and heard a lot from the Fire Department Study Committee last night. I get concerned that if you have a representative of this faction, a representative of that faction, and a lot of different people picking particular members of the committee, that you won't necessarily get an opportunity to pick a coherent whole. So I think that, you know, traditionally, our committees have largely been appointed by the moderator. In the last go-around, the School Committee had representatives, actually, School Committee members served on the committee. The Superintendent was probably at every meeting that we had. Actually, Mary was Assistant Superintendent when we started, and, but there was a great deal of input. We had a discussion last year about the Fire Study Committee and who should be on that. And frankly, I was shocked by the tenor of the whole discussion because, obviously, the Fire Chief and everybody else, they're stakeholders and they're participants, they're essential to the committee, whether they're on it as voting members or not. So I would, I don't know, I think it makes sense if we're talking about potentially a $50 million expenditure to have somebody from the Select Board or their designee on it. I don't think it's necessarily essential. I think two people may be a little heavy, but that's, there's nine, it's a nine-person committee, and I don't worry about that. I think if we are trying to select, have different groups select four or five different people, just makes it a much more difficult way to establish a really effective committee and get the most talented people that we have to serve on it. So I would oppose this motion to amend. I do support the article, and I won't get up again.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, would you wish to speak to the motion to amend?
Michael Fahy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. Going off the previous speaker's point of the Fire Building Station Building Committee, I think it would be irresponsible to have the Superintendent of Schools be a voting member, as was very debatable during the time of the Fire Station Building Committee. And I know I am rather a new member to Town Meeting here. But these members, such as the Fire Chief and the Superintendent, have a vested interest in the schools, and of course, they are going to go for the best options for themselves and the teachers. And I think we should leave the appointees of the committee to the moderator, to have a coherent committee that is best represented by the town and not solely those who have a vested interest. Thank you.
Anyone? Yes, sir? Would you wish to speak to the motion to amend?
Keeshlaiker, Precinct Four. You guys can hear me? No one's going to scream louder? Just making sure. There's just two things. I think that the committee should be made up from as many different people, some with children, some without children, some that have a lot to say, and some have, everyone can add something different, but to just have it lean heavily on one way, then we're going to get a $70 million or a billion dollar, whatever it's going to be, school system, which would be great, but then our taxes are going to be $500 million, and it's not going to be fun. The second thing I want to say, and I'll probably see you at the Tucker School tomorrow night, is during the wave, I moved to Milton six years ago, and my house now probably costs twice as much in my tax, or maybe twice as much as when I did then. So I wonder if you could speak to it, not tonight, because we all want to go home, but how the rising costs to actually get into Milton is going to affect the rise of families and people coming into town. So I disagree with the motion. I hope we strike that down, and then I hope we can vote and go home. Thank you.
Just, does anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Yes, Mr. Clark?
Yes. Dan Clark, Precinct Ten. I was just going to propose an amendment to the amendment. I was just going to propose an amendment to the amendment, if that's allowed?
Well, you could ask a friendly, you could get her to agree to a friendly amendment to your language.
So based on what we've heard for feedback, two things struck me. It seems like the vast majority of people don't approve of the Superintendent and the President of the Milton Education Association, or designees. But it does seem to be some interest about, I think two speakers hit on it. What makes our committee, I think, so effective is that we have, we were originally nine members, nine members with a lot of diversity, former Town Meeting Member, and then eight people that are in the architecture, engineering, and construction industry. We have three architects that are in our committee that bring very different expertise. One brings a lot of historic preservation, one works at Northeastern with much more of a planning, urban development background. So just to say you have a architect or a couple, you need that diversity. I think we need this membership to be made up as much diversity of people that are in that AEC industry. So my friendly amendment would be to strike the Superintendent and the Education Association, but dropping the Select Board down to one to allow the moderator to maximize the ability to make this a strong committee like we have for the Fire Station Building Committee.
So if you could, so your proposal is actually to Ms. Gankarski, because she made the motion. So if she accepts what you said as a friendly, okay. If she doesn't, then we'll have to hold off on yours and vote on hers. Does that make sense?
What are my, are you just...
Do you two want to have a sidebar to talk this?
No, 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 no. I added this because Mr. Cuccello mentioned that Mary Gormly shows up at all these meetings. I did not know that. And Chief Grant was on the Fire Committee. So that's why I thought the Superintendent Schools would be a parallel. But now I've heard differently. And then when I thought of a teacher from the Teachers' Union, it was about someone who was directly in contact with the day-to-day activities of the schools. However, as I hear opposing opinions, I will withdraw, make a friendly withdrawal.
You will draw your entire amendment?
Yes, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we are, hang on, Mr. Clark, just want to make sure the audience knows, we're back to our original text, so far unamended. We're all there? Now, actually, Mr. Carr's been waiting for that original text for a while. Mr. Carr?
Henry Karp, Precinct Ten. I'm just, I have a question. What does it mean by Select Board or its designees? I mean, designee, is that like my neighbor Bob, or is that an actual member, or is it somebody substituting for you temporarily? What does, is meant specifically by the term designee? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, since the language in this recommendation, at least the adding the two Select Board members...
Wrap you to the mic a little more.
Adding the two Select Board members or designee was my language, or my suggested language. Designee simply means that the selectmen have the right to choose, should they, should the Select Board member decide that they don't want to be on the committee, they have the right to choose a person to represent them. So they are basically, part of my reason for wanting the Select Board represented is because we have to start learning how to solve problems as a town, not as the schools, not as the town, but a town collectively. And we just don't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. I think you were waiting, is it, let's see, has anyone else not yet spoken on this? Mr. Clark's already had a first bite, so you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members. Mr. Moderator, we had the opportunity tonight to sit in the Charles Winchester Auditorium. And in reflecting on the history of this town and the history of this building, and seeing Mr. Cuccello, the successor to Mr. Winchester, come forward to the microphone reminds me of the success we had in the appointment of a previous school building committee. Last evening, ladies and gentlemen, we heard the, and I look at Mr. Clark, and Mr. Clark came to the Cemetery Trustees to talk about the proposals of the new sightings of fire stations in the town and the work that committee did. And as we stand here tonight, I stand and I look across this room, every person in this room is a volunteer, and they come here because they want to make a better Milton. We all want to make a better Milton. And as Mr. Cuccello was speaking, I thought of the thoughts of previous town meetings about having a better Milton. And that better Milton was put together by a committee of very dedicated volunteers, volunteers from all walks of life, from different experiences, different constituencies, different competencies. So tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to consider this recommendation from the Warrant Committee, from the School Committee, and recognize that the people who put this together do so in the best interest of the town, to have the best people at the table, to have the best possible outcome for the town, regardless at this point of how much money we're spending. We haven't got to that yet. They're going to come to us, they're going to tell us, they're going to give us recommendations based on competencies, constituencies, put all the people to the table... based on competencies, constituencies, put all the people to the table. I ask that we move forward on this. I ask that we approve this recommendation, we vote for this tonight, to get the people at the table, the constituencies and the competencies, to get the job done. Come back to us again, and then let us talk about money, and then let us talk about sighting, and then let us talk about all the opportunities we're going to have. I ask that we support this tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clark, anyone else wish to speak before I go to Mr. Mullen? Yes, sir.
Peter Mullen, precinct two. If we look at the recommendation, it authorizes the moderator to appoint a nine-member committee. As I understand this, and maybe Town Council can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the recommendation as currently written authorizes the moderator to appoint two members of the school committee, and it authorizes the moderator to select two members of the Select Board or their designees. I don't think that's what's intended. My understanding is the history of this article is that the requirement for two members of the Select Board was added by the warrant committee. I'd like to hear from the Board of, the Select Board and the school committee as to whether they want to have two members on this committee. I like the idea of not designating people by the boards that they're on, and let's see who volunteers to serve on the committee and come up with the best committee that we can come up with.
So that's a question for Select Board and School Committee, correct? Yes. Dr. Donahue?
Thank you, Kevin Donahue, town meeting member, precinct three, Chair of the School Committee. So our intent in drafting this article was to mirror the success of the article that passed in nineteen ninety-eight. And at that time, the suggested article was for a seven-member committee with one member of the school committee serving on it. That was amended on the floor of town meeting to a committee of nine with two members of the school committee. So we have endeavored to seek success where our predecessors have succeeded, and that was the rationale for the initial recommendation. I will leave the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen to comment on their respective edits. Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you very much. We listened very closely to this, for each of us, this is our first time around at it, and we've discussed this, and we agree with the recommendation of the warrant committee. We thought it was thoughtful, insightful, and it was looking futuristic. So given that, we ask you to approve this article as written. Thank you very much. Let's go home.
Now, Mr. Clark, you've been waiting. No, you're all done. Okay. I have a question for Town Council. Can I make a motion that anyone who votes for this raises their hand, a volunteer, to be called by the moderator for the, is that inappropriate? Inappropriate, okay, I withdraw. In that case, all in favor of, by the way, this majority vote, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Oppose, no. Good night.
That's seven thirty at the Tucker School. Thank you. Thank you for finding my... Hi. Kevin Donahue, again.
Yes, can I ask you about that first, grass?